Now that I say that, trustee swamp is in West Tanta. And he would call in if we need him. I forgot about that. No?
I think I just saw him drive by.
Okay. Blue after, okay. All right, the next thing on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Before I have a motion on this one, if we will go to page two on the agenda, part nine, the seventh discussion action down, the NMSA, the proper number should be 13-1-194. If we could make that amendment. Okay, now I am.
I will move to approve the agenda with that change.
Okay, I have a motion on the table to approve the agenda as amended. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Mitchell, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approval of the minutes, Mr. Teeman.
I have a change on the regular minutes of the meeting of March 9th on the last page, under the paragraph, halfway down, resolution number 2021.06. The third sentence says, was advised by Mr. Turley that this wall was a full project. And I think that should be the one.
This was for the full project.
I will might have so much change down here.
Okay. Anything else, any motions?
I like a motion to approve the minutes.
From both meetings?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a motion on the table by trustee manager to approve the minutes from the council meeting of March 9th and the special council meeting of March 19th as amended. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, announcements slash discussion. The only thing on here, the important thing on here is we did move to a level two water restrictions, that is in effect, we moved to it last week, is that correct, Barbara?
Yes.
And I think we've already cut a violator and they've had to stand in front of the judge. We will probably, by recommendation of our water department and guys that are doing all the hard work, we will probably be moving to a level three shortly unless something major happens soon. But we sure didn't want to just jump from being on a one, what, two years now, to go to three, we need to. So we're stepping it up, trying to.
Can you refresh our memory, please, of Maryland, what are the major points that we changed in level two?
The level two, I know you can't water.
It's odd in even days.
Yes.
Certain watering on your plants, there are certain waters.
Yes, everything has to be hand done, you can, no sprinklers. There's not a whole lot of difference between level one and level two, there are some.
Height of awareness.
Yes, definitely heightened awareness, most of it is awareness.
Nothing that affects hospitality at this point.
You can't water the street. Mr. Hall, do you remember anything that's changed on there?
Um, it's pretty much the same as level one, but there's a few more, but I can't remember exactly how it went, but it's like water between six and 10, but with consideration and, yeah, definitely don't water the streets.
It's a lot more encouragement to restrict your water usage than anything else?
It's posted in the post office.
It should be posted in the post office?
I have it right here if you want me to read it, otherwise it's posted in all of the, um, a majority of the local businesses on their front offices, in the office, the proclamation is in the post office, here in the office, and in the electric company. It's basically prohibited water waste, no entity or operation served by the water system show waste cause or permit to be wasted or applied to non beneficial use as defined in this section. Spray irrigation is allowed from 6 o'clock, 6 p.m. to 10 o'clock, 8 a.m.
Okay. Thank you very much. And the next announcement is the resignation of Paula Downing from the library board. We also have a resignation of Jim Downing from planting and zoning. Do we have that in writing, Mr.?
Via email.
Via email, okay. We need to get that one official, so we're not going to appoint anybody on this one quite yet. But if anybody interested in planting and zoning, definitely send me a letter. Okay, the next one, I am going to skip to see if Mr. Mills will come in here later tonight, I think he was trying to. And we will move up to reports. Skipper, license, Jeremy and Michael Adam. Do we have anything?
Oh, just a couple of things, um, we did all the dirt work last year, we got a little bit to clean out, I think I talked to some of you, as well as you when we were on the rock plant tour, just about doing a little bit of fine grating, and then there's two springs that are out there that are just kind of no man's land, so we're going to capture them, trench drain them, and take them to the edge of the Tuvin Hill where if the village would like them, they can capture them there, if not, they'll run into the culvert and dump the canyon with the rest of the water. The other thing is we were looking at doing summer tubing, I had kind of talked to a couple of the council members and you about that as well. And just a couple of drawings on it. There's, uh, there's two companies who make it, uh, In Snow, two brothers out of Michigan, and Neva Blast. And, uh, I got an address in the press room here. Oh, I skipped you. So they're made out of recycled construction barrels, uh, which is polyethylene, which is supposed to be one of the most stable plastics there is, when it quote unquote degrades, doesn't release anything, it just becomes brittle and breaks. The tubes do use a wax, it's all food grade, they wouldn't tell me all of it, they said it's proprietary, but it basically, it's mineralin oil, food grade mineralin oil, and food coloring.
And you're looking at that for this summer?
Yes, sir. But it was something, if you guys approved it, we want it on exhibit C on the lease.
And this is, the way you were explaining it the other day, this is, you take it up at the end of the summer and it's back the way for the winter?
We'd put it up in May, you know, close to like Memorial Day, run it to Labor Day, and they're just four by six tiles that go down, and then there's an inflatable bumper, like bowling, basically more or less to keep your tubes in the lane there. As far as like installation, it has to be really straight and pretty true grade, so they recommend like casehors or pressure vines. Part of the proclamation work, we're going to be on like the final grade and stuff, uh, before the monsoon start, we're going to reseed that whole tubing area and the banks and everything, just because we don't want any of that washing away, so.
Anything, John?
No. I think the more we can utilize that in the summer, the better.
That's great.
That particular company, like in the last three years, they've done, you can get on their website, um, they've done installations at Mount Rushmore, Steamboat Park City, Vale, Breckenridge, and Bryanhead. They listed Bryanhead in there because I know we got a watershed there, and Bryanhead has a very similar situation where they, it's not their entire watershed, but they do gather some water here there, and so. But all of those, uh, all the other ones were on national forest land, so some groups to jump through on that end. There was another company for a while doing synthetic surfaces for summer ski and or tubing, and you have to spray water on those, and on national forest, you can't, you can't water anything on it, and so that's where a lot of these guys have moved to In Snow, Winter Park, and Ridosa. But in the next month, we'll have Neva Blast, which is the other company, on their parks and recreation grant, that was part of what they used it for, was the tubing area, they got a Neva Blast tubby and a mountain coaster. It's something I've been wanting to do for a few years, and they're just kind of hard to get a hold of, and so we got a hold of them, sent some stuff, they did some engineering on their side, and it all looks like it'd work out as long as the village was okay with it.
I think we are, I don't think we can actually give you permission to do it since we're still waiting for the lease to go through.
Okay.
Right now it is posted, right?
Yes.
For another two weeks, and then, then we move forward with it? And so far, I don't think there's been anybody else comment on it?
I have it on the April 27th special meeting for the adoption.
Thank you very much, I think this is a great idea, the more things you get out there, the better.
And that was kind of why I brought that up, now they have a production, they're going to do it a couple times a year, um, so I was trying to get an answer sooner than later, because if I give them the call tomorrow morning, the hopes would be that they could produce it, we could get it all put in by the Fourth of July, so.
I don't see why that wouldn't work, there's, I don't see any negative here, the only thing that, you know, we're worried about is the lease, but I don't see any reason that that's going to fall through. Everything looks like it's moving forward well. So, okay, thank you very much. Next is judicial police library wells and springs.
What's your status on the water audit?
Tony's not here, Mr. Hall, you're up again.
What's that again?
The status on the water audit.
Water audit, we haven't got any further information yet, we're still waiting for them to get back with us on the reports on that right now.
So they've finished all their field work, didn't they?
Yes, they've got all their field work, we're still waiting for them to get the final results back to us.
Okay, do we have any estimations, do you know of, or?
I haven't heard of any estimation just yet.
With us, showing nearly 50%, but some kind of loss, and we've been able, water's important every day, it's, it's the highest of the reports, if they need encouraging, let us know. That's, uh, make sure we need to get that, a plan of action for that going.
When was the last time we touched faces with them?
I have to ask Tony, I don't think these touch faces with them for about a week or so now.
Anything else on? Okay, I stand for a motion. I have a motion to accept the reports as written, got a second.
Second. Are we going to hear from project manager's report going to go through here, or just?
Yes. Is it not on that?
Yes, it's on that.
Oh, okay, okay. Yes, we'll go with that, we've got a, a motion and a second, under further discussion, project manager, would you please give us a report? I'm sorry, this is new to us all.
So everyone has a copy of my report in their, in their binder, um, I don't, if you have any questions, I'll, I'll stand to answer them. One update is that, um, we did receive approval, as you all know, we sent an email out to all of you trustees, we, the Department of Finance Administration project manager did approve moving forward with the proposed ice rink, ice rink multipurpose facility. With that being said, the mayor asked that I go ahead and start drafting up a request proposal for architectural services. I have an estimated timeline of advertising April 25th and May 2nd, a pre-proposal conference May 5th, proposal deadline May 25th, award at the June 8th meeting, that's just all tit for tit, that's just a product of some of the work I did today, still waiting on the details, still, I'm not sure what you all want to call it, if you want to call it a multipurpose ice rink facility, um, does that cover what, is that appropriate, do you think?
I think so.
Because what, what was the point, to make sure it was multipurpose?
Right, so I will be drafting the documents, and then Barbara's procurement officer will, will approve them, and then I will assist her in getting the advertising and implementing the process.
Okay, thank you, anything else?
The, the grants that we, uh, let's see, we got 130,000 in capital outlay plus 94,000 for roads, am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
So we, through our ICIP, we had applied for 130,000 for acquisition of the property where the wastewater treatment plant is, uh, we had already started communication with the, the Forest Service, I'm working on a updated, um, request for purchase through the Town Site Act with the Forest Service, the last request was done in 2012, I believe, and I need to provide some updated information, and we've already started, like I said, communication with the Forest Service. The 94,000 was, um, a while back, I had made a presentation of all the grants I was applying for for roadwork, and, um, the governor this year had her own pool of money, and I had asked for $500,000, and, uh, we were awarded 94,000, and it was for the specific area of Woodlands, Blanca Vista, and Maple. So she signed the bills on Friday, last Friday, uh, I got an email today that the bonds will be sold the end of June, so there will be bond questionnaires coming out next week that I will be answering, and then we will wait for the executed grant agreements from there.
Were there any restrictions on the type of roadwork you do, or was it just for road improvement?
This one, it was just for road, well, plan, design, construction, road rehabilitation.
Is it limited to those areas?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is. The reason, if you recall, I had scoped out, if you will, all of the areas in the village that needed work, and then we, we had to pick certain, we had to pick specific places for each grant, so we had these grant specific places, this is the one that was awarded for that area, and I applied for the governor's, it was for that area there.
Jay, I have a question.
Yes.
Within Mexico DOT, the cash match, how many times has that ever been waived before?
It has not been waived since I've been clerk, to my knowledge, because what they do is instead of looking at, in the past, from what I understand, they, DOT reaches out to DFA for availability of funds, and they always look at your general fund.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Although that's not, that's not the fund that most municipalities use for the cash match, they focus on your healthiest way.
Okay. Anything else on the reports? Okay, we have a motion and a second, so if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion accepted. We're halfway done. Okay, new business, approval of the new hire for MBD clerk, Jessica Mallett, am I saying that right?
Yes, you are.
Okay, uh, we've interviewed quite a few people, we've settled on what we believe is the best person for the job, and, new to Cloudcroft?
Yes.
I, no, we did not settle it, I said that wrong. I would like to introduce our new MBD clerk and ask for approval of my hiring. Jessica?
Yes.
This is the board, minus Bruce?
Nice to meet you. Hi, Jessica, I'm Michelle, got here about three weeks ago, actually, hell, four weeks ago, and I love you, thank you so much.
And Jessica, what's your work history?
Um, I came from Princess Crisiss, I worked there for 13 years, got laid off due to COVID, and customer service, I've had about 25 years experience since, total.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
All right, I would like to use motion to approve my new hire. So, thank you, George.
I'll second.
And second, and thank you, Mr. Teeman. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We're still planning the time in the hour of the MBD.
Yes, once, once she gets trained up and legal to be the MBD clerk, the MBD department will be open, as long as the building is open, MBD will be open, that is.
With the exception of lunch.
Lunch, yeah.
She does get lunch, couldn't talk about that. Welcome aboard. All right, next, I have a letter of interest for the library board by Ms. Anna Dean, and I would like to appoint her to the library board. Ms. Dean is the one who painted the beautiful painting of the trestle that's in the front office.
And she's done multiple dumpsters.
Yes, she has.
The most famous.
So I would like to recommend her to the library board, if I could have a motion on that.
I'll make, I'll make that motion to accept her to have a position on the library board.
Okay, have a motion to accept her, have a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, would you like to say anything, Ms. Dean?
Uh, thank you.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, Southwest Disposal, request of annual rate increase, Mr. McCourt, you have the floor.
Yes, sir.
Now, remember, one of the artists that you're moving their dumpsters around is.
I do apologize. Yeah, we're asking for a 1.4% increase, effective July 1, for our contract, that'll affect, we're billing 1,086 meters per month, and that'll raise each meter by about 20 cents per month.
How long is your contract, Peter?
It's eight years.
Okay, and it was started when?
Last year.
Last year? When?
Twenty twenty.
Oh, so we've got seven more years?
Yeah, we went out for RFP on it.
I will move to make that change in the contract of 1.4% based on CCI index for garden service.
Okay, I have a motion on the table to accept the 1.4% increase, so have a second. Have a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Next, we're moving on to authorization, the utili, utilized, I can't say that word, and improve unused village roads as driveway and/or process to purchase unused village land, Joshua Spice? Spice.
He's not here.
Okay.
His representative?
Anybody want to speak on his behalf?
I have this, no.
I just know him as a person, sorry.
Looking at the, at the map, and I went up to the site, and the problem I have with that, it's a little dead end road that we're only using as a driveway, but it's, on one side is his property, on the other side is, it's Cloudcroft property, kind of a park area, but it's in between Sunset and Pearly, so it's a very steep little area. But that is the only access to lot 20, it's not the only access, but it is the primary access to lot 207, which 201 and 207 both do have access from Highway 130, but that's that really bad road off of Highway 130, so I think if we sold that property, do you? Yes, it's that part of the road. If we sold that property, I think we are doing a disservice to.
Part of the section are you looking at?
I know, Miss May, the question was that being able to access it, driving on it.
You can drive on it, it's a road.
At improving it though.
Right there, we could improve it if we.
Yes.
Why would we allow him to choose? 207, no access to the other.
That's right here, with the sunset. But that road, that.
That's Coyote.
Coyote.
Yeah, and you gotta be careful because they have water on it.
We got big.
We got, we got, we got water right here, and we have a pool of water that comes down feeding zones down here off of Art Avenue.
I just don't see any reason that we would get rid of that.
It doesn't deny use, I mean, it's.
It's a road.
If he wanted to grab it, could he grab it?
I don't have an issue with it if he wants to grab it.
With your supervision, I don't think if someone would improve the road.
Well, if he doesn't, it's a lot of.
Yeah, you can't gate it, it's.
It's just going to go down, it's going to be in that pit with dirt or art avenue, basically, so, but yeah.
On the map, it looks like it was designed to serve 207, or else they drew 207 because of what was there.
It can't be accessed by the front access, because you already got two homes on the front side and the north side, so it gets congested in there, so you want to come on the south side to 207, because you've got 201, or 200, 201 to the left, down there very backwards.
The guy doing this question, you know, is a speechwriter.
Last year.
205.
Last year.
And he just bought the property.
That's Mr. Spice.
So I don't have a problem with that, as long as he doesn't go excavating or anything else in there, but yeah.
You know, you have to be careful and say, yes, you can improve it on your dual's direction, you know, and that makes sure that we know what's being done, and it is low grade, so. That takes the benefit of us, we're getting gravel, it's expensive, that's the guy who uses it, helps him, and he doesn't have to buy it.
Right, no, I just don't think we can sell it, that was, that was my thoughts on that. So what are we going to do on that one?
Give him a motion. I mean, let's see, what he's asking?
Consideration of waiver, that's not it?
Authorization to utilize.
I was trying to speed up.
And improve unused village road as driveway.
Okay.
That's number one, yeah.
I thought he was trying to buy it, I do apologize.
Now, then he asked for the process on how to purchase it.
Yeah, he doesn't get number one.
See, to me, we can say, yes, you can utilize and improve it.
I, I don't know why we'd need to say yes, that he can utilize a road.
He wants to use it as a driveway, so he wants to make sure that he's not going to get.
We just get restricted to.
Anyone else?
I would move to agree, John, accept his request for purchase or usage of the road from the village, or wherever.
Oh, if she wanted to do it.
Why, he, he, take that out.
That's the tree.
So. Really, the clarification should be he's utilizing it as a village driveway, not as a private, if you're going to do it, then make sure that's where.
So we would need a motion to allow him to use it in a public right of way. Is that our motion?
Yeah, and improvement under.
In the direction of a public right of way.
Yeah. That's what I was hearing.
Anybody want to step up and say that?
Yeah, we, uh, we approve he can use it for utilization of public right of way, and improve it under the direction of head amendments, as you want, Paul.
I have a motion on the table to approve usage of this road and approve under. and approve under, under Mr. Hall. Yes. And not be able to purchase. About a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
We all want you to go through that again.
All in favor? Okay, motion carries. Okay. Next thing on here is discussion action about our proposed ice skating rink. Ms. Bradshaw, you have the floor. As long as you stay away from everybody. At least six, but a clearance from anybody. And don't cough.
Salaries, I'm stripping at a basketball, basketball game, too, so I'm heading on. So I want to say thank you for letting me speak here, and I think it's great that we want to upgrade that ice skating rink and make it something that's better than what we have. But, um, can you give you guys space for some, too? I'm sorry, I'm terrible public speaker. Thank you. So what Penny's passing around is, uh, just the thing I found it on the internet. It's the typical cost for a fully functional hockey ice skating rink. Everything that you would need.
Cindy, excuse me, can I ask one clarification?
Sure.
Uh, because you work in our chamber, who are you representing?
I am representing myself as a citizen of Cloud Rock.
Okay. Larry Evans, as president of the chamber, is in support of our upgrade of the ice rink. I just want to make sure we're clear on how you're talking about.
But I'm just speaking for myself as a citizen.
All right, thank you.
So, but anyway, I mean, a full blown hockey arena with bikes and the bumpers and the locker rooms, everything. It's well over $3 million to fully complete regulation ice hockey arena. Our, our budget, as I understand, is $820,000. I'm gonna leave a lot of money that we're gonna have to find grant money for to fully complete this project. And, um, so $2 million deficit in the grants. I mean, if you guys think you can find well over $2 million in grants, that's great. But how long is it gonna take to complete that project, to make it a year-round facility? And so as it was proposed at the meeting I went to over there at the skating rink, there's, um, there will be no public restrooms, no locker rooms, no concession stand. It will still not be fully enclosed, it will not have electricity, it will not have the chiller to even make the ice with the tubes that are gonna be put under there. So it's still not a year-round use ice skating rink. And what, and have you guys considered the cost of an employee once you get that up and running? The cost of one full-time employee per year is $20,160. That doesn't consider if you're gonna give them medical insurance, um, workers' comp insurance, vacations, sick days, because here pretty soon, for, with the legislation that we just had, it doesn't matter how many hours a week you work, for every thirty hours, you're gonna have to give that employee one hour of sick time. There is no minimum amount of hours. And the average cost of liability insurance, just liability insurance alone for a fully functional ice hockey rink is for between $1 million to $2 million is another $75 a month, plus electricity, plus water, plus any other bills that you may have to keep that place running. And my question is, are you going to be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of that facility? And there was talk about having tournaments here, you know, ice hockey tournaments, once it's all going. Um, there are four hockey clubs in the state of New Mexico right now that I could find on my internet search, and those do range in ages from four to eighteen years old. Most of them play primarily in the Touse, Albuquerque, and Rio Rancho areas. And I did see some do travel to Southern Colorado for tournaments. And we were talking about bringing revenue to Cloud Rock. When we have the mountain top basketball tournament here, and these are small schools, you know, usually five to six teams, well, technically it'd be ten to twelve teams if you count boys and girls. Every room in this place is taken, and some of the teams go stay in Al Goredo, they go stay in Redoza. So there, it's not, how, where are we gonna put? If we have these big hockey tournaments, where are we gonna, where's everybody gonna stay? They're not all gonna be able to stay here. And then, um, so, you know, and then my thing is, is Cloud Rock, we're very unique, we have four seasons a year. In the spring and summer, people come for our outdoor activities, the hiking, the biking, the fun things to do outside. In the fall, they come for the fall beauty. So speaking of the fall beauty, if we expand that back this way, we're gonna cut that whole strand of trees down, which is gonna be less foliage, it's gonna be available in the village. So I know we wanted to have something that was year-round, but if you look at the set, and I gave you guys one, if you look at the second paper I gave you, I actually got this from the parts of Rex Manager in Redoza. And this is something they're gonna be able to use year-round. So it's a, it's just a fifty-foot round ice skating rink. It comes complete with the chiller to keep it frozen. And they say that that chiller that they have can keep that ice skating rink frozen up to 55 degrees. We could almost still be using the ice skating rink with that. And then in the summer, they retrofit it and it becomes a splash pad. If everybody knows what a splash pad is for the kids, all the kids, they eat the water, and they will squirt up and they play around in the water. And it wouldn't be a use of waste of water because it is, has a recirculation system in it. So it sanitizes and then just recirculates that water. So it's not gonna be a big water use. It's not gonna be a waste of water. And, um, I talked to Titan Steel, they actually gave me a quote, and they said they could give us, it's a 22-foot high, like a barn, like we were talking about before, for, like a horse arena. And that would be $80,000 for that, to have a cover. Or could be possibly use the cover that's already there because it's 60 by 120. So we may be able to use the cover that's already in existence. And then we would still have a multi-use facility, something that could be used year-round. And the cost on that, the basic system was $285,000. You could maybe upgrade the concession stand and the warming hut that you have now with some of the extra parts of red money that's there. And then I know they have portable, I don't know if there's very many people here ex-military, Bear Base has them, they're like bathrooms on trailers. So they're fully functional, they have water that you flush and wash your hands, and they're on a trailer. And I believe you can purchase one of those for $27,000. And that could be a multi-use for all around the village. If there's a, any kind of function, move it and you just take it and you just dump it like you would in RV. So you find an RV dump station and you go dump it. And whoever was using it, be responsible for cleaning it. And that also is an ADA facility, so it is ADA compliant. I will still leave a huge sum of money to spread throughout the village. We would still have an ice skating rink for the winter, up to 55 degrees, splash pad for families in the summer, and still have a lot of money left. But just in case you guys want to go with that, I don't know how the original ice skating rink plan you had, I don't know how big the building you go quote on, but while I was on the phone with Titan Steel, they had a customer cancel, and they have a 60-foot by 120-foot, 22-foot tall building that they will sell you for $139,000. So it's a customer cancel, and it's the same size as the one we have up there, it's $139,000. That's all I have, thanks.
All right, well, thank you for your input. You got a lot wrong from the meeting that we had at the,
Okay.
at the skating rink. It was never really looked at year-round hockey rink.
No, it was a year-round use facility.
Yeah, it's, it's a B.
Yes.
Year-round, and right now we are sending it to the architect to see, because we can't go out for crisis. Right. Until we go, until we follow the proper procedures. So that is what our next step is, and we're going to see how far we can get.
Right, but I, and I understood, I.
And I like the water, I like the water spray thing, but that, that one actually will limit us more than the skating rink, I believe, as far as different uses. I do like that a lot.
I mean, I was just in thought, it was a, it was a thought, and I just couldn't say, I think it's frivolous to use $820,000 on one project, it's not gonna be finished.
It will be finished.
And Cindy.
When will it be finished?
Larry has me on the next, uh, chamber meeting so that we can make sure that we've communicated how did this project get to where it is and what, what is being planned, so that we don't have misunderstandings or miscommunications throughout the community. It's very important that we, we all understand what we're trying to do, because it'll take all of us for it to happen.
Yeah, we, we definitely need your help and support.
Unfortunately, I won't be at the next chamber meeting, but.
But thank you for.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Thank you for adding. And we are still working on that. Yes.
If I just may, uh, you know, just follow up on what she has to say here. You know, I understand that you're trying to, you know, do this analysis here, which I feel is not complete. And, um, you know, what we're talking about is how to best utilize this $820,000 project. You know, um, we're gonna do the best that we can to have a facility that's appropriate and, uh, and have the amenities that we all want to have. And, and we certainly are trying to figure out how to make that work. Another question is, is, or another thing I wanted to bring in, just so everyone is, uh, understanding that an official right, uh, ice rink, uh, will bring in, uh, additional funding, additional programs in the future, has to be an official ice rink in order for that to be a reality.
Okay?
You know, what you're talking about as far as the structure, it's a little low because the heat that people come off. You know, there's heat load involved, and when, when you're really studying refrigeration and ice, which I, I have studied a lot, you know? And, uh, so, you know, heat and moisture and air temp, you know, there's a lot to consider there. You know, there's some items here that you've listed that, uh, it looks like that we need, but we already, we already have. And so, um, you know, um, so I just wanted to point that out. And, um, you know, um, there's a lot of interest, uh, in this, and I think it's, uh, you know, I, I can understand your concerns. And I guess one of my concerns is, as, you know, representing this as a concerned citizen, did you use any time or the resources while in, in your position to, to do this work within the scope of your position?
No, I did not, I did it on my own, on my own time.
Thank you.
So can I have to ask you a question? What kind of things are you hoping to bring in? Like what for the ice skating?
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt this. Y'all need to talk about this outside of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Because this was, this part was not on the agenda. Okay? And I'm not trying to shut anybody down, we just need to carry on with the meeting. Okay, the next one on the agenda is, actually, Joe, it's back to the ice skating rink. Discussion for disclosure of, of certain interests of trustee James Maynor under the New Mexico Governmental Conduct Act and the New Mexico Procurement Code. That is your floor.
What, uh, as we work through this project in a small town where we need everyone who can help to chip in, we run into, to, uh, we're a small town, we're all active in our town, so we have inner, inner mingling interest. What we've done through, with Jeff's advice, and he can help me explain this better than I ever can, gotta go through here and identify as a citizen, as a trustee, making disclosures to address any real or potential conflicts of interest as relates to Governmental Conduct Act. It's, uh, the goal is to assist the village of Cloud Rock in the proposed upgrade to the James Sewell Ice Rink located in Zenith Park, Village of Cloud Rock, for the lowest possible cost. As we hear in our discussions, there's a wide range. We won't know what these costs are until we, we get a good design out and someone coming back and bidding these things. So I followed, uh, Jeff's guides. I included all of my companies, what their interest is, and, uh, and what they're not. This is a written document, it will become a part of the minutes of tonight's meeting. I don't know if Mayor could go ahead and read everything on it or summarize.
It will, it will be in the minutes, I mean, everybody, all the trustees can read it, it will be public knowledge afterwards.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Basically, I'm getting the idea what you're saying is that because you're on the council, it's, this is to say that your businesses and companies could actually bid on this type of work over at that skating rink? Without confrontation with your position?
There are none of my companies that I own or control that would be involved in any bidding of the project. What I'm trying to do, because of just that kind of question, Donna, is I want to make sure that the village, all of its people, you can read it, you can see what we're involved in and what we're not. And so that, that we cure the perception of conflict. Are we admit in writing and sign, this is notarized, this is enforceable document. Uh, it's under Jeff's guidance. And it was a way that we don't have a problem is because we're putting it out there for the public. And Jeff, you've read this, have I, have I accomplished what you suggested I do?
Yes.
And so that, that was, to answer Donna's question, that's exactly why we're doing it, it's clever. So I will not be bidding. What I want freedom to do, and I want public information on, is that I've got a lifetime in the construction industry. If we can help guide this project, or the village can acquire a better project for a lower cost, then that is exactly what our heart is in this for. I'm, I'm making this disclosure so that I can work for free for the village to the best of my lifetime skills. That is, uh, that's the reason for the disclosure.
And in the minutes, will it basically say what the Governmental Conduct Act and New Mexico Procurement Code are? So that we see what you're presenting in the minutes, also explains what those mean?
What I noted in here was Government, Governmental Conduct Act, NMSA 10-16-1 to 10-16-18. I didn't copy the entire act, it's, it's public information, it's our law. With a computer, anyone can pick it up. The, uh, Jeff, did I get those numbers correct?
Yes.
And that's, uh, and those acts are involved, so it's, it's cutting out the part, they don't want elected officials bidding public works and driving business to themselves. I mean, it's longer explanation than that.
No, I keep.
We are not to enrich ourselves in any way. So I've gone, uh, I've gone the distance, I'm trying to show where do I make my money? Here's the companies I get paid out of. None of them are gonna be bidding this.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else, you're gonna move on to the next one?
That's a round.
That would be the consideration of the work.
Yeah, that's just a discussion, so, so we presented it, it's going into the minutes tonight, I think that's the job of the disclosure. It's going into the minutes tonight, I think that's the job of the disclosure.
Okay?
And we need to make a motion to accept.
Nope, now we move up to the waiver, because trustee Maynard is asking for a waiver under NMSA 13-1-194 as to trustee James Maynard's participation in the planning and procurement of the proposed ice rink improvements. So Yes, Eric, can you help us with that?
Yes, uh, there are really two aspects to it. The governmental conduct act replaced an old statute that was in the that basically, if a trustee feels like he has a conflict, if there's a conflict, he tells the other members of the board about it, and they can vote, get a line to vote if he wants to. They have a choice to do that. That's been replaced by the governmental conduct act, and it's, it's pretty inclusive. Uh, what, what it dropped, what it boils down to is the procurement code, which is a different section of the Mexico statutes. But they, they, they do have interaction, if you will. And the bottom line is, is that the question has arisen as to whether or not trustee Maynard, because using his background and so forth, even though he's not gonna bid on anything, is because of familial relationships. Uh, the, it's not just the trustee, but members of trustee's family. Can the trustee do something in the procurement that guides things their way? And that comes right down to planning and so forth, so uh, what it boils down to is that the board, uh, can make free determinations that are set out in, in section 13, uh, -1-194. And I'll read them if
Yes, we go.
This, uh, under the procurement code, a waiver is permissible if the board makes three findings. That contemporaneous employment or financial interest of the employee has been publicly disclosed. Trustee Maynard is considered an employee under the, under the procurement code, it's very, very broad, even though he's not bidding. See, I think, let's see, you make a lot of money on, on these meetings, don't you?
Yeah, we make handsome money.
We're talking, you know, if you give per diem, you know, he's no salary. If you give per diem, you're considered to be an employee under the, under the, uh, procurement code. So, the second determination is that the employee will be able to perform his procurement functions without actual apparent bias or favoritism. And the employee participation is in the best interest of the local public body. I mean, and it's, it's, the bottom line is, is, and we're trying to protect the trustee from any criticism or question. Uh, if, if you don't, if you don't want him involved in it at all, you don't make those determinations. If you don't find the, these three things exist to support a waiver. And it's, it's just about that straightforward. Nothing, nothing's gonna be, you know, you know, every, every procurement, whatever it may be, and, and this is, uh, I can say it extends to family members of, of the employees, so.
And I threw another sentence in the bottom of this. I said, "I further agree to extension of any official act to avoid being included in the prohibition." So it's, well, I said, "I won't vote when you get bids back for the work related to this improvement of the ice rink." I'll abstain from voting. So that there's no way that my vote can guide or direct whoever you choose to do the work. So I'm trying to disclose all my interests. I'm trying to, uh, to be able to, in fact, perform fully the functions to, uh, to try and get this thing done as cheap as we can, whether it's design changes, or whether it's methods, or materials, or just knowledge. Uh, you know, we don't know all those answers yet. And then, the reason to do it is for the interest of the village, to get this work done for less than it would normally cost if it went out uh, under regular government work. And then I won't vote on whatever y'all decide to do. So I've gotta remove myself from, from who you pick.
So the question is, if we have those three, if he's proven those three things?
Yes.
Then we can stand for a motion, or not?
If the board makes those findings, it supports a waiver.
Okay. I'll last for a motion if anybody wants to give me one.
I say grant the motion.
Do I? Okay, I have a motion to grant the waiver by trustee Mitchell. Do I have a second?
I'll say it. You would also need to specifically make these determinations as part of your motion.
As part of the motion?
Yes.
If I can remember all of your ideas.
They're, they're written down, they'll be in the, in the minutes.
Does, does he need a copy?
What's that?
Does he have to read them?
No, I mean, I, I read them.
Okay.
I'll read them again. Contemporaneous employment or financial interest in employment, meaning his actions as a trustee as, of the employee, been publicly disclosed.
Yes.
Not only those interests, but his private interests
Yes.
Has been done. The employee will be able to perform his procurement functions without actual apparent bias or favoritism. You find that, you make that determination, and the employee participation is in the best interest of the, of the village.
I agree. Okay.
That's, that's
So it has been moved, and it has been seconded, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I am going to make this a roll call vote. So, Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
Mr. Damon?
Aye.
Mr. Maynard?
Abstained.
Mr. Denny?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Smogge is absent. So it does pass with the three votes, one abstention and one absentee. Thank you. Motion carried. Okay. Next. Emergency response complex plan.
There's one, here for that.
Was there one for that? No, there's not?
There was one for me, the temporary structure.
Oh. Hey, okay. It was still there. Special use permit for a temporary structure in 96 James Canyon, presented by Eric Worson. Sorry, I don't have my glasses, because they fog up on me.
So, uh, all I'm asking is the little piece of property that we have, a food truck's on. I'd like to put a, a little pioneer, uh, structure. It's, it's about 10 foot by 14 foot, peaked roof, um, old school, looks like this, wood mat siding, and be used for tourist information. Uh, maybe they have brochures in it, we'll put placard, you know, advertisement type stuff in it, so people can come by and get that, get that information. Uh, use it for water, water restrictions, fire restrictions, anything like that. Uh, so it's, uh, it's a little shed, 10 by 14, it's on skids. Uh, if that complies with what, uh, the temporary structure ordinance says, then I leave it like that, I just put, drop it there, right on the ground. If I need to put some wheels on it in the tongue and turn it into a little trailer or something, I can do that too. Um, but anyway, so I'm here for that consideration.
Okay, Mr. here.
So I, I included all the, the necessary information, uh, for a temporary structure. Um, it's the same process that we use for issuing special permits for, uh, the two, uh, food trucks, if you, food trailers, if you will, that's on there now. Um, the same that we did with Mad Jacks. Um, and the same that we did when Pacific Rim was cooking outside, so.
In extraordinary circumstances? What would be the extraordinary circumstance?
Well, the fact that I, I don't think any extraordinary circumstances is ever determined in the previous issuance of, of special use permits.
So Eric, you're gonna use the size of this like a billboard or something?
Um, I mean, I, my goal isn't, that's not what I really want. It's, it's an old, it could be right out of the Pioneer Village at the museum, right? It's just an old building, I don't wanna cover the outside, but I don't have any problem with putting, uh, fire restrictions or water restrictions, that kind of thing. But I don't want it to turn into a, um, a bulletin board or a billboard. That kind of stuff is inside. So it's got to be electric doors, there's, there's no electricity, I don't want people in there at night, just like, like now, we close down after dark about 8:00. So there's no electricity there, there's no water sewer, no, no hard connections to anything. Uh, it's just a little structure sitting on the ground, and there'll be brochures, pamphlets, uh,
All this, all the inside though?
Inside.
What would be the
The only thing that I would consider outside are just those fire restriction type things. And the only reason I'm saying that is, I've been asked by Forest Service if, if this were to pass through, would that be something that they could put their fire restrictions on the outside? And I thought, well, okay, if that turns into water restrictions, and then how many, how many things, it doesn't really detract from the whole point of what we're trying to do, so. If, if that is a heel breaker, I'll just tell them, no, we're not gonna do anything on the outside at all, it'll just be on the inside. But in the, in the daytime, it'll just have a, a set of little billboards that opens up, people come in and get their information. You'll have a sign on it, of course, that says tourist information center, uh, so that would be a sign, uh, that's on the building, but that's it.
Question, how long do you need the building there?
Uh, I'd like to leave it, I'd like to have it there.
Well, it says, uh, this is, uh, special use permit is for a limited time on a temporary structure.
Right, I, I guess you'd have for a year at a time.
Okay.
So just every year, we just continue to renew and stuff?
You know, the, uh, that, I've, I've voiced this topic many times, I'll, I'll beat it to death. We have to be very careful in how we support temporary buildings in our village. This, that is cheap and quick, which is not a good path to head Cloud Rock toward. The, uh, when we look at your food trucks, those are businesses that are coming in, they have a specific use, you can't be in business without them. And whether it's Mad Jacks, or the two on your, your lot you're talking about, or if we did one somewhere else in town. That's a, it's a mobile business. To simply ask to put up a, uh, an empty folder, temporary building?
Oh yeah, no, it's, it's just like a museum, it is western, modern.
Yeah, and, uh,
1930s.
To me, I, I don't see, I don't see the need for your business. You know, this isn't like, you're saying like, I need more storage, or it's a new ice house, or, you know, something, those things are going so good. So I, I, I don't see why it benefits the community to, because anything we do in each lot, the next lot owner can say, "I just wanna do one, I'll get that into the street." If we don't watch it, we've got every empty lot has a series of, of now, I mean, old portable buildings. So that, that to me doesn't sound like a direction that I've heard the reason why we should do it yet. Wouldn't this be a duplication of the building right across the street? Of what? Of the Chamber building, or?
Yes.
They, they should have all this information right now.
That's right.
We do.
We do.
They do, but it's not, it's not across the street, I mean, so we're talking about right here, right down here across from Allsups. Uh, so, but regardless, I mean, that's what we like to have, is tourist information. I'm not trying, it's not a business, not trying to take anything away, we're just trying to provide more information for the tourists.
Could you do it more as a bulletin board, or covered or weatherproof or something, instead of an old building?
So, so the problem with that is that the wind comes and blows everything around. We want the brochures on the inside, you know, maps of the forests, trail maps, you know, whatever they can get, we want that on the inside. Put it on the outside, I got enough problem with Allsups already blowing trash on the property already, so. We only want things on the outside.
See.
So if it won't, if it won't work as a temporary structure, maybe there's another avenue of doing it. Uh, but it can't be a permanent building. There's restrictions on that.
On those other ones that you were talking about, didn't they go through planning and zoning?
None of this goes through planning and zoning, the code says that all special use permits are granted by the trustees.
So they, planning and zoning doesn't even want that?
They, it went to them, and then planning and zoning pointed out that, that it comes back with
So there's no recommendation either way from them?
No, and as you can see, the things I've highlighted, the code jumps around from special, issuance of special use permits, temporary structures, um, it just bounces around. And it does not require a recommendation from the planning authority.
I think the use is covered by Chamber Congress already.
Yes, ma'am?
Is this not a duplication of what the Chamber already passed?
So I, I don't, I don't know if it is duplication, but certainly some of it probably would be. But again, I'm not, this is not a business.
I know.
I mean, it's just, I'm trying to provide more tourist information. I, I hear very commonly that there's not enough information out there, that there needs to be some sort of a kiosk somewhere in town. And so I'm just responding to that. But again, there's, I'm not, I'm not, there's no business to be made, it's not gonna sell your advertisement for your business, or not gonna sell Forest Service maps. Just trying to provide another source of getting tourist information. And also disseminating information that, that could be water, you know, water restrictions or fire restrictions. The problem I have with that is just placing plastic stuff on the outside of buildings, I don't like that. So I don't know how, how truly effective that would be if you have to go inside to see those things, but.
Well, it's to be granted as a temporary sort of thing, so why not maybe try a trial, a trial period, just see if the tourists actually do use it and it's necessary.
Well, anything else on it, Eric, before I stand for a motion?
Uh, I don't think I can.
Okay? I will stand for a motion if anybody wants to give me one?
I would, go ahead. Jeff?
No?
I would move that, uh, we deny the special use permit.
Okay?
The use is already covered with Chamber Congress.
We have a motion on the table to deny a special use permit? Do I have a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Sorry, Eric? But
No problem.
You're up again. Discussion action. Emergency response complex plan.
Alright, so this is, uh, something you're quite familiar with. And so we are at the fourth place where we are asking for some decisions. So tonight we have three decis- decisions that we'd like you to consider. And we'll talk about those. So you have the maps, which, for the audience, are the same, not maps, but drawings, the same drawings that you have up on, on the board here. You have several pieces of paper, the first one just describes the players that are part of the project. Uh, so the, the key partners, of course, are the Cloud Rock Fire Department and Cloud Rock Police Department, those are, those are principal partners or players in this, and partners. Uh, and then there's the other interested parties, and those parties are those who would either like to have an office there, um, would like to participate in some way. And that is the O'Hare County Sheriff's Office, they would like a long-term lease agreement. Uh, New Mexico Game and Fish, they would also like a long-term lease agreement. United States Forest Service Law Enforcement, they would only use that as a day office, because they do have an office of their own. Uh, but for law enforcement to get together and work together is, is really key, so uh, it would be handy if they had a place that they could, um, it, I'd go so far as to have a desk there, but um, that may even be too much, that they can just come and, and use that facility. Uh, American Red Cross, and then the Sheriff's Office Dispatch, which is the backup dispatch for the mountains when the dispatch in Almogordo loses their comms or is down for some reason. So we're not, we wouldn't, we currently are the backup for the O'Hare County Dispatch for the mountains. Um, but in this redesign, we're going to maintain that. So in that maintenance of that, we need to plan for that. So that's, that's just a list of the players that are involved. Page two, uh, is the first decision that we got, uh, for you today, so the, the dirt work for the excavation has already begun. So the dirt work or the excavation has already begun. The initial excavation is only for expansion of the parking and then consideration of phase one, which you have not approved yet. So right now, we're talking about the phase two portion of the dirt work, which will allow for the drive-through aspect. So there's parking being developed on both the west and east side. And then the excavation of the rear will allow for the drive-through portion behind the fire station. And then in that, it will also allow for phase two if that is approved by you. So the phase two excavation work was sent out for quotes this week, exited last week, and it was received this week. I've got, I went up to three different contractors. One responded with a quote, one responded with a no quote for his capable or their capable would just not allow it. So they preferred to respond with a no quote, and the third did not respond at all. So that's what I have for you there. If you would like to proceed with the phase two excavation, the quote, and of course, the one thing I forgot to bring, but it was twenty-six thousand dollars. Whatever it is, I do have it in writing, but I forgot to bring it. So but as I recollect, it's twenty-six thousand dollars.
Kevin, would you grab me the thumbs up on my desk?
I have it too.
Go ahead.
So that's, that's the first decision that we asked of you. If you'd like, what would you like? Can you maybe just go through all of them or stop?
Can they explain the phase two scope of work?
Okay, don't mind. So phase, so phase one scope of work is what you see on the east side. And then on the west side of the fire station, they're just starting it. It's starting in the back and moving down towards the front. What that does, it brings all that grade down to highway level, so it's usable as parking. What phase two does, it connects them in the back. So we would drive, so you would drive in on the east side, park, angle parking, up against the museum parking or the museum property. And then you back out and pull around the station to get out. Or if you're parking on the far side, you would pull around the station in that direction. So that's what that accomplishes. It also moves, there's a concrete block retaining wall in the rear of the fire station. It removes that, move, excavates all of the dirt work back and then resets that concrete block retaining wall. And then on the east corner, there's an excavation for utilities. So the next thing we're going to talk about, or the next thing we're going to talk about is the phase one construction. For phase one construction, because of where the concrete and because where the utilities come into the existing building, we have to relocate all the utilities. And in doing that, if we are planning wisely into the future for phase two, then we need to do this construction. We need to lay this ditch, relocate the utilities, which is the electrical, the propane, the tularem basin, telephone, and the OPPT. So those need to be relocated and trenched up to the new location, which is the northeast corner of the property. So that's, so that's kind of it in a nutshell. After that's all been excavated, the walls have been reestablished. And that, but also includes the upper parking. So I was talking about the lower portion, which would connect the lower parking areas that are accessible from Highway two. But you can see on the east side, there's a driveway that's been cut in. That driveway would extend to the upper parking and then on the Borough Street. So that, there would be an upper parking area that would be accessed by that driveway. So then after all that's been done, the entire project would be covered with six inches of compacted base course. So it's six inches of base course measured after compaction.
I had a question on your plot plan. The parking, additional parking along Borough, you show it as new public parking, but then you're noting this as a new private driveway. If, if the public is going to be, is that a curve? Could they only access this parking from your fire station side? Or is this going to be where they can access it from Borough Street?
So that...
Those are conflicting terms.
Yeah, I'm glad you caught that. So the, the new public parking designation there is, that portion is actually on... So two things. One, we need to have a survey or unclear exactly how the setbacks on that piece of property work. Because the property, the original property that you were pointing out there does not have any of the restrictions or the new...
Borough Street parking plan.
Yeah, Borough Street parking plans that the Skywater subdivision did. But when we bought Skywater, we bought that piece of property from Skywater, it includes those. So we've asked for a survey to be done on the property and researching all the legality so that we know which property requires off-street parking, public parking, and which does not. So our assumption was that we did not have that requirement there. But I will caveat that with saying, it's not, it's also not our intention to remove off-street parking that exists. That could be beneficial to both of us. And so in that case, if that does turn out to be a parking lot, that would be on the village. Granted, it's all village property, right? But if it's on the fire department side of the property line, and thereby somehow restricting access from the, from the public street side of the thing, we don't, we don't have any vested interest in that. So we would leave it up to the council. But I mean, to access the parking side, to access those parking spaces from the Borough Street side or from the fire department side, I mean, there's no reason for us to restrict it. We don't need it.
Public parking benefits, exactly what's there.
We can just be open parking.
Everybody, whether it's a museum activity going on, if that parking can be utilized, or whatever.
And if it would help, so if it would help of the restrictions, what we also don't want to happen is that becomes a thoroughfare. And then by almost a road, just because it becomes the shortest track back to the other side of town. So if we have to then put those off-street parking spaces on Borough and restrict it on the fire department side, even though it's not part of the new restrictions of Skywater, that might be preferable because then we, then we have an easier way of stopping through traffic. And that's what we do not want. We don't want through traffic going down this new driveway.
I can sure understand that.
As far as for those doors, so we need to, for phase one to start, and I really like your page here, we need to reapprove or approve, council approve, correct? Was that in the budget? Are you...
So basically, there was fifty thousand dollars in the budget from fire protection, fifty thousand from ambulance, and sixteen thousand for architectural services. What's left in fire protection is eighteen thousand currently. The fifteen thousand, this would be part of your survey and architectural. And I'm sorry, I didn't bring the ambulance one. But I don't think we've expended much of that, except for we do have the dirt work to pay for that's currently going on. Plus this, we pretty much expend.
Right, that's, that's what I was thinking. So where does this money come from?
So clarifying, so you're now talking about phase one?
Yes.
So okay, so we moved on to phase one.
The dirt work is pretty much done.
Can I ask you another question?
Yes.
Eric, if you can go up there toward the Borough Street parking, you have about, I didn't imagine, maybe a four-foot vertical cut. Is that going to have a retaining wall? How do you keep that from collapsing? What are you going to do up there?
So there'll be a retaining wall using those concrete blocks that exist now up against that. And it's all based on the survey that we need to find out where exactly that lot line. But we'd also want to remove or replace those rocks that exist up on top now with some of those concrete blocks also. Our view is not to have a solid row of concrete blocks, but just to have one in front of each car space.
So they can't drive off.
And so, yeah, cars can't...
You may as well make sure it doesn't collapse.
Right, so the collapsing part is the stacking of those concrete blocks. And then in the, in the design, it calls for excavation, sort of like a footer digging down and compacting six inches of base course at a tilt back for those, for any of those concrete blocks. So it'll be tilted into the embankment.
One thing that Eric and I looked at over there, in our Borough Street parking plan, we have twenty-five feet from the front property line into each of these lots. That's reserved for parking and a boardwalk. Parking space is twenty, nine feet wide and twenty feet long, I believe. So we've got five feet in there that, what the intent was, someday it may look like this, where you have two rows of parking and two rows of boardwalks. When the fire station is down below us, he may not, there may not be any benefit to that boardwalk. But if he's going to, if he's going to stack blocks on it, then you'd be using that five feet. We still have twenty feet of parking behind him. So that's where we were trying to make sure I was clear on it, was that we're still gaining all the parking that we intended through the ordinance for Borough Street parking that ended in Borough Street.
And also, what looks, what it looks like on paper is, you know, it's not always what's on, what you see out there in real life. So if you think about where people park right now, they don't park in that kind of a chevron shape. They really just park straight across. And so if we move those, if you'll notice when they are parked there, there's a very big distance behind the rear bumper to any usable street. So we could probably move those cars back ten feet. And the street would be fully, still fully passable with plenty of room to turn and that sort of thing. So we won't know, we need to get the survey on the ground, mark the corners, and then make a decision there.
Because we have fifty feet for the street and then twenty-five feet either side. So that gave us almost ninety feet wide for street and parking.
Right.
And that, as we know, I mean, at this end, this is what we, this is eighty feet out here for comparison. So that, when we were doing all that, working through it, it was trying, this is congested on a busy weekend and we're grateful. But we didn't want to make it any worse. We just wanted to adopt something similar. So I, I'm an advocate of protecting that parking.
So what you're talking about is not only excavation, but utility movements too in this second phase?
No, that would be in phase one, correct? Of the construction.
Okay, so...
Where's the utility movement?
Phase two excavation is digging the ditch and laying the conduits in the ground in phase two excavation. Relocating the utilities itself will happen in phase one. So phase one construction.
A building, yeah.
Phase one construction, yeah.
So that's the one we have to figure out where the money's coming from? Because that one's not budgeted.
Correct.
Okay.
And we don't plan on, I mean, we can talk, you want to go ahead and dive into that one?
If we're done with the, if we're done with the phase two dirt work?
Yeah.
Is that what it is, phase two dirt work?
Do we need a decision on it or are we just going to go?
I don't think we do because we already gave the...
So basically, you're saying that the phase two dirt work is the previous PO plus this?
Phase, phase one is, phase one dirt work is completely separate. Phase one is what exists on the east side now and what is being completed now on the west side. Phase two is this amount right here, so twenty-three, six fifty-one. So the, the only thing is that on the phase, the phase one dirt work, he's not doing that little bit of removal on the northeast corner for thirty-five hundred dollars. So that's, that's the credit that will exist from the phase one. But I don't want to combine the two too much together. I mean, this is phase two.
Is there any other options on just asking somebody else? You ask two people that didn't respond, or one responded with no, one didn't respond. Is there anybody else? I'd just like to have another number, is what I was kind of looking at.
And so that's, that's why I'm here. So I mean, I can continue to keep on making phone calls as long as you direct me to.
No, I'm fine with it, but I would kind of like to have another number. Just to know if we're in the ballpark or not. If nobody's going to respond, nobody will respond.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead with phase one construction.
Okay, so on phase one construction, on your little map, that is the blue section. So we're adding one apparatus bay to the east side of the station. So it'll be the sixth. In that, this is what we've talked about for the last year or so. And not to get sticker shocked too much because we have so much happening in that corner by relocating the utilities and prepping for phase two, that this price per square foot does seem extraordinarily high. But it also does include what the project from last summer. So you sent me back to get you all the numbers involved in the, in the project, in the facelift, in the doors, the signage, the entire thing. So this now includes all of that. So I will say, when you do price per square foot, it seems extraordinarily high, but that is not all that's been included here. There's a lot more to it. So it's sixteen by sixty apparatus bay. The construction, I mean, I don't think you want to read down every bullet on this page, but in general, it's building an apparatus bay on the east side. It's doing the facelift that we started talking about last summer, including the door replacement, siding replacement on the front face, sign replacement, and then relocating the existing utilities. So again, the ditches are dug, conduits are in the ground, but now we need to take them off of one building and put them on the new construction as part of the relocation. And in doing that, we're anticipating that phase two will be approved, whether it's, you know, this year, next year, whatever, but we're anticipating that. So we're building utilities in such fashion so that they can handle a phase two if that were to ever happen.
And this phase one pricing estimate does not include the excavation dirt work, correct? That's already going to have been done from phase two. Then back to phase one to do this.
Correct. The only excavation there would be part of phase one is just what you need to put the footers in the ground and core concrete. And it would be, so this apparatus bay is for smaller vehicles. It's not for full-size apparatus. If you look at the west side, it's a shorter bay. We're hoping we can squeeze in a ten-foot-six door. And that's what we're hoping for with the phase one facelift with the doors up there also. So that's what we're shooting for. But it will not be a full-size apparatus. It will be for command vehicles, just smaller vehicles to fit on there. We have a, I'm sorry, wait.
Excuse me, refresh my memory. This all, this money comes from your fire fund?
Correct.
If the fire fund can't be used for paving streets in town or other projects, it has to be dedicated to fire.
Correct.
I read something today that the governor signed protecting fire funds. Did you see that?
No.
Okay. Like fifteen million dollars or something. And anyhow, I didn't know if it's part of this one, or if it just helps protect your money.
I do know that the discussion was going, was ongoing. I didn't see exactly what you're talking about. But I think what might, you might be referring to is there, the fire fund is supplied by insurance, homeowner, homeowners insurance across state and Mexico, they just pay area. That goes into that fund. But only roughly half of that fund ever goes to the fire protection, fire services. The other half goes to projects. Wherever they go in the state and Mexico, they go somewhere else. They don't have a fire fund. So the protection of the fire fund was to make sure that we at least kept what we are getting now and not, and don't get...
And maybe that's what it was, I shouldn't have said it. Is that this money can be used for something else? You have this money in your account?
Yes.
Or the fire fund has this money?
Yes.
This money right here?
Yeah.
No.
Where's the, where's the disagreement?
You've got, you have an eighty-six thousand cash, and then you still have PTE that you have to expend, so you've only got two eighty-nine eighty.
Oh, way up, but this is going in...
Or you're talking about ambulance too.
So, so we're, but this is going into next fiscal, next budget. So if we haven't gotten down to the schedule yet, but so construction isn't, not going to start until next fiscal.
So you'll have, you'll have another round of money that supplements what you have?
When does that money come in?
July first.
Well, is it like all at once or is it...
So it comes in, it comes in allotments, but you're given, we are given a letter at the beginning of the year of what we will receive, and it comes in quarterly allotments. So we budget, we budget for the whole of that. And then we receive it in twenty-five percent chunks.
Pay the bills in quarters?
So if we get it, if you could get there eventually, I'm not going to say it's not going to get there.
But it is...
But if you were to try and write in the check today, you'd do all of this.
We cannot do.
If a bill can't do before you've got a quarterly allotment, how do you cover that? Do we do it out of the general fund and do you repays it? Or do you have to just make the bills due on a quarterly basis?
So, so our budget shows our total amount that we receive every year.
Yes.
We, so I actually don't know the answer to that question because our budget is the total amount.
Yeah.
I mean, we could spend the total amount on July first, total amount. Because it's, I mean, that's what's in the budget and we know we're going to get that. We get a letter from the fire department.
And we can always, whatever he has as a cash balance at the end of the year is what he can expend. Then he gets an allotment from the state fire marshal, granted to him, comes in on a quarterly basis. He doesn't expend it all, that obviously stays as part of the cash carryover. Well, what I'm saying right now is the number that he's... Well, what I'm saying right now is, the number that he's displaying here, he's gonna have to catch up to, because he doesn't have it on hand, unless we're going into the ambulance also.
But, but it's going, yeah, but it's going in the next fiscal year. So, so the project won't even start, we're not even, we still have to go to bid.
Okay, there, there you go, that's.
So we don't even have final design on this, so if we, let's just go ahead and flip two pages, go to your schedule. So, um, what we're asking, the second thing we're asking for tonight is to go to final design for Phase One. So we're not ready to go to bid, we have to do the final design. Um, we have not spec'd out the, the exact layout of the, the structure, and the doors, and the insulation and all that. We, that's what we're asking for now. We have preliminary plan, and that's what we have up here on the paper. Um, if you like our preliminary plan, then we'd like you to send us on to the final planning, and final planning leads to bid. If you'd like us to come back before we go to bid, we can, or if you'd like us to go full, to go to bid, and then just come back after we've received those bids for construction of Phase One, uh, then we'll do, we'll do that as well.
I think we'd like to see it after final design.
Before bid.
Before bid.
Kevin, uh, how do you like, do you like this layout, or?
I do.
Yeah.
It doesn't, when it increases ours, is when we get to the Phase Two construction. So ours is.
Okay, so, so.
But we have to do the.
Phase, Phase One, I'm right, the, the blue is the only thing we're talking about for this money.
Right.
We have to do the bay for us to have some place to move, to do the construction above where we are now.
Okay.
Right? I get that, right?
Yes.
And who slices?
I like that.
Jenny, I have a question for you, and, and I know that this is all not happening right now, but, um, in, in the future, he's stating grant, um, Phase Two construction, a grant through, um, or New Mexico Finance Authority with Fire Protection Fund is guaranteed for. We already have two with Fire Protection Fund, is there, is there a limit?
I, I don't know.
Is there, okay, so that may be something we need to research as far as how much we have already being guaranteed by that fund?
There is a limit.
Is there?
Um, the last I knew is forty percent.
Okay.
But, but I can definitely look into that when we get, when we get to Phase Two.
Yeah.
So right now, um, so, the second thing on the table, like I said, was to go to final design for Phase One, and then really refine, help us refine what we're gonna be asking for, and hopefully get this number more precise. These numbers are just estimates, but they are estimates based off of lots of phone calls to lots of contractors, um, and so that's where I've got the information. Then the third thing we're asking is if we can go to preliminary design on Phase Two. So if you like, if you like what you see on the map, and, uh, the police are still in favor of moving down, we're all gonna go to the same center, then we'd like to preliminary, start preliminary design of Phase Two.
What type of lease agreements did they, um, talk about with game and fish and?
Um, game and fish.
Say, long-term, what kind of, I mean?
They generally like to do five years.
Right.
The sheriff's department was the same way, about a plan year to ten-year agreement. We are likely to talk to the sheriff's department, because a few on the council are in the word. About five years ago, uh, when Benny House was the sheriff, we used to pay a dispatch fee for stock truck. That was at first thirty thousand dollars, then it became twenty thousand dollars. When Benny House was the sheriff, between us and EMS at the time, taking so much of the load in the county, Danny dropped all of that dispatch fee. Now we step forward to Sheriff Black, we have our records management system, and basically the sheriff's department is paying for it. I think David is wanting a long-term agreement, but leave that trade-off as it was, where we're not changing money, he'll dispatch us through the records management, we give his four guys a home.
So basically, a lease with?
Right.
No revenue.
More than you'll use, I think, with the, versus the actual lease with the sheriff's department. With game and fish, they have to do it as a lease, when they get to that point. Unfortunately, when we talk to them, they can't do that until we can show them what they're getting.
Right.
You know, they'll say, yes, we're absolutely interested, but until they know this is a square footage, or this is the size, they can't do this. What they're often calling up on the funding for Phase Two. Uh, the mayor and I, and I believe Mr. Mayor, met with a bunch of the legislators over in the park. I talked to them a little bit about money, and about the police getting hammered by the legislature. Every one of them told me, we need to ask for money every year for our police department. We'll get it every year. Alamo's got it, the county's got it, we need to put that number one. This could be one of those things that, that we ask for, and that, and get something that. All right, so it might be a source for me.
Source of revenue.
Y'all have to request that, I can't keep questioning.
All right. Anything more in here, is there?
I have another.
Just a.
Just the last, um, document, there, just to refresh your memory, that was the facelift for last summer. So I just put that back in there, because this Phase One would include.
Would include.
Would include that.
Right. Okay. I think we go ahead with the Phase Two excavation, I would really appreciate if you'd at least reach out to the one that didn't respond again.
Okay.
And, or one more, just to, see if we can get another set of numbers to.
Okay.
So, there's only, I don't like doing things with just one option. And then, let's look at Phase One on our budget final. Because we're doing a final budget.
On the twenty-seven.
On the twenty.
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven.
On the twenty-seven. And that way we can kinda dig into the numbers a little bit more, exactly what.
Are we gonna have some time then, or you gotta be in a regular meeting?
No, that's just a budget meeting.
Oh, okay.
Right?
Special meeting.
It's a special meeting to finish the budget.
To adopt the, the, the ski cop properties.
That will be on.
So that should be very, I mean.
I think we have two hours on the.
And we, and we may, that's kinda why I wanna put it on you, don't you, John?
I think you probably do, this is one hour, we go.
And we did say the twenty-seventh, that's five thirty?
Did we settle a limit on it?
No, I have not posted it yet, so I can change. Huh?
Four and six.
Four and six.
Four, two, six, two hours. Four, four to six hours?
One, 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 two, three, four.
And just a reminder, we're, all we're asking for is to, to proceed for the next level of planning. So, final, final planning on Phase One, and preliminary planning on Phase Two.
Only.
We're not asking to go to bid or construction or anything.
Okay, on the final design for Phase One, uh, how much do you estimate that that's some cost to go into that final design?
Shell?
Um, I don't have a number for you, but we would have to have structural engineer, um, possibly a multiple engineer, just depends on C.I.D.'s requirements, and then, um, possibly a civil engineer, just to verify, creating a drainage and utilities.
Are we thinking?
With your opinion, you've seen these numbers, are they pretty close to what you're, what you think?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you think that, uh, final design of Phase One would be less than twenty thousand dollars?
Yes.
That should be covered in that original hundred thousand, shouldn't it, still? Are we getting closer here?
I think close. But I can, I can check.
If we can, if we can.
I think it's a hundred and fifteen, because we had fifteen for professionals design, so.
Yeah, if we can make it in that one that's already been approved, we'll, we'll let you know, let us check on that. If everybody's okay with that. I just don't wanna get out of the range that we, that we approved and then kinda held back from.
And we have not used the full fifteen thousand on purpose on yet.
Okay.
Not in close.
All right, everybody good at that?
As long as it's not new money, it's easy, because that's, that's what we've done last summer?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't think we need a vote for last summer, or a motion to go over, since it's all free, free money. Thank you very much for the, this is great information.
Great, thank you.
And the summary page is, I think, that was what we were exactly trying to ask for last summer.
Okay.
Cool.
Yeah.
That's, I really like that. Okay, we are going to move down to the Bills and Treasures Report.
Which motion is this?
I'll do that right after this motion. Is that a motion, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a motion on the table to pay the bills and and Acknowledge the Treasures Report, or Approve the Treasures Report. I do have a second.
There was no wording of it. The bills have already been paid.
That's true.
Would you like to make it an amended motion?
Yes, let's do it. Acknowledge the bills that have been paid.
Okay, so this is our required two votes now.
Okay.
Okay, so, the amended motion is to change the first motion to acknowledge the bills that have been paid, and approve the Treasures Report. Do I have a second?
Hold on a second.
We have a second on George's motion to amend Jim's motion, so all, any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Okay, all opposed, motion carries. Now the motion on the floor is the amended motion of acknowledging bills that have been, that have been paid, and approving the Treasures Report.
You're writing this up.
That's why you have a recorder. All in favor?
All right.
Right, I need a second, sorry.
So, I'll say.
You can't second your motion.
I'll say.
Thank you, I think you're the only one standing at this point. So trustee Taman seconded it, now any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, now we do have one other thing, Chief Summers. Did you wanna go over this, just a real quick summary, you touched on it, or you've gone through it in detail on several meetings?
Right, it's just, that's the final bill, that's what the governor actually signed. If you go through there, she kinda helped us out, she, she took some of the individual out of it. At the first, if you go through the bill, it brings up individual again. We're waiting to see what the attorney general says, and how he's going to interpret that and get his guidance. Then we'll know exactly what the bill is actually going to be. But right now, it's about the best we can hope for, considering where it was, where it started, and the final probable justice protects our individual losses and employees.
How does that affect, uh, the fire department and the ambulance services?
Same.
They're all, they're all way.
You know, we call like body, employee, worker, myself, Eric, and any other full unemployed workers. All of you guys, all of us.
So it's partly perception also, and, and just like Kevin said, we're kinda waiting to see what the attorney general said. However, if you have a Facebook account, and you see, uh, Mayfield Fire Department, they just posted a very long, a lengthy discussion about it, and they stayed in there, they were already lost volunteers who have, who said, no, it's time for me to get out. Um, I've had one person that's very concerned about it, but hasn't turned in the resignation yet. Um, but, you know, it's there, it's getting a little scary.
Comment?
Yes, sir.
Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, when I read this, it says when this bill goes into effect, then anyone that has violated our constitutional rights can be sued, and that would include the governor?
No.
Why not?
She's an employee, you'd have to sue the state of New Mexico.
Okay.
The same as if somebody sent an appeal. We already asked that question, because the Chiefs Association is gonna do it.
Okay.
Attacking the agency.
Oh, and also it says in here that, on the date that this becomes effective in two thousand twenty-one, that any violation prior to this act can't use this act as a, for, for basis for suit, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's still a very scary bill.
Well, it has to be, it makes all of us very liable.
You know, in the New Mexico Constitution, it is constitutional law that every school teaches Spanish, as well as English, every student in New Mexico.
Really?
So if you do not have Spanish class, you can sue under this bill.
For violation of your constitutional right.
Your constitutional right. Most people don't read the New Mexico Constitution. Very few people know that one. Okay.
How about an adjournment?
I will wait for an emotion.
Ah, we'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn on second. I have a second, seconded by trustee Mayor, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed, motion.